Thank you, counsel. I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of executive. Salute, salute. A second, please. A second. I have a motion for a counsel secretary, seconded by councilman Chisholm. Call for the question, please.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Councilman Chaffford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to entertain, is there any motion we need coming out of executive? Second chair, Red Eagle.
Thank you, Chairman. I can make a motion to accept the company to off-let the Continental leases.
Sir, is that your form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
I would need to ask for a second, please.
Second.
Motion. I have a second by councilman Redcorn. Any discussion? Thirty-nine, call for the question.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
No.
Councilman Chaffford?
No.
Chairman Waller?
No.
Councilman Big Horse?
No.
Councilman Chisholm?
No.
Motion fails.
With that, I'd like to move on down to one other item, is housekeeping. I'd like to make an announcement. I have been asked and sent on the Secretary of Energy, Jennifer Granholm, for the National Petroleum Council, and all the natural gas advisory committee for the Secretary of Energy. They're asking me to be present at a April twenty-third meeting in Washington, DC. I was going to ask that at this time, the council would entertain me with a motion to allow me to represent and travel. They actually cover my expenses, but this is a case of necessities or emergencies while traveling. Lacy, how would I word that motion?
Allow the chairman to sit on and travel to the name of the owner?
I would like to make a motion that my position and travel, it's accepted for me to be part of the National Petroleum Council, sixteen-twenty-five Hay Street, northwest Washington, DC, and also cover any expenses that might occur during that position. I need a second, please.
Second.
Second. I have a second on the floor. Motion by Chairman Waller, seconded by councilman Chaffford. Any other discussion? Call for the question.
Second chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chaffford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The information will be sent out to us as we have some of the items which will be discussed. I think the curriculum for us as a represented Osage Minerals Council will be three things. Number one is the identity of our reservation and ownership. Number two is the funding available to DOE on every suspect that we have talked about. The carbon capture, the plugging of wells, and the remediation of our reserve. With that, I do have a little more housekeeping. I want to congratulate, councilman Redcorn has been invited to be the Region Six Tribal Operations Committee. This is a travel event. Do we need a resolution for the council to travel on this?
Yes.
I need a resolution to allow the council to travel to Twenty-seventh Annual EPA Region Six Tribal Environmental Summit that will be held at the Osage Casino, April seventeenth through nineteenth. I would make that in form of a motion. I need a second.
Is that, I thought July eighteen and nineteen.
We haven't got to that one yet.
Oh, sorry.
But I'm sending you to both, so.
Okay.
With that, I'll need a second. So, so I have a motion on the floor by Chairman Waller, councilman Big Horse, to allow the council to travel and attend the Twenty-seventh Annual EPA Region Six Tribal Environmental Summit. And toss, call for the question, please.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chaffford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse? Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Last, my housekeeping will be exactly that. Councilman Redcorn has been asked to attend the... I'm trying to get the official title here. A conference DC eighteenth and nineteenth of July with the NSF has working on it. I would like, I'd like to ask the councilman Redcorns that the council is accepted to serve on the NASCE-M Workshop Organized Committee, Orphan Wells. I hope there's an opportunity to invite you to OSU to, in the funding request, substantial funding now available through the PA and the DOJ. Lacy, I'd like to have that in form of a motion. Will that be enough? Yes, counsel?
I asked to send an email to include Mr. William Lynn, because we both worked on the orphan well its conception to discuss the Osage effort to...
Lacy, am I allowed to add, and are designees, to that motion? I would do that. I need that seconded.
Second.
Then I have a motion on the floor by Chairman Waller, seconded by councilman Redcorn. Motion to attend these committees and with our designees. The NASCE-M workshop for orphan wells. Any discussion? Yes, counsel?
Thank you, Chairman. Did you say NASCE? What does that stand for in acronym?
Man, I'm trying to actually find it.
Okay, while I'm looking at it, I've just, you know, so I can maybe learn a little more about it. This is for, what are they going to discuss? What is, what is this organization?
Councilman Red.
If I may, Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and say, I just wanted, I just sent it to Lacy and Everett to introduce this to the council. I'd like to go ahead and vote on it next month. That way it'll give us time to see exactly what's going on, because I got this from
Well, thank you, sir.
the folks in Oklahoma State, and I'm not quite sure, but, you know, I just want to make sure it's pro-production. I know there's a lot of communication federally, and we're a production organization, oil and gas convention in my... So, I would like to modify that to table to next to April fifth meeting.
Sir, will you rescind your second?
I'll rescind my section.
Lacy, do I need to table it?
I think there's ample time for us to review. I'm just doing what you told me to do.
Do I need a resolution to table?
It wasn't what you intended, so no.
No, thank you. We'll have a prepared information that we're going to vote on.
I'll have all them voted in.
Thank you. With the patience, I really appreciate it. With that, I'd like to go to the superintendent's report. Superintendent, thank you. That really helps us out on this other environment, as you well know. As law, you made my role in the ship.
I'd like to read another record or report for today's meeting. Oil and gas, water royalties for January twenty-twenty-four production. Total oil produced was two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-five-point-fourty-four royalty barrels of oil produced. The royalties paid was two-million-nine-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total, total gas produced was one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three MCF. And the royalties paid was fifty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. The total gas liquids produced was two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-four gallons. And the royalties paid was twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. The total tank bottom, tank bottom oil produced was one-hundred-and-seventy-five-point-seven-four barrels. The royalties paid was two-hundred-and-twenty dollars and forty-one cents. The water usage royalty paid was two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Water disposal royalty paid was ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. For rentals and bonuses, oil and gas rentals paid was one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. For oil and gas bonuses paid, amount of three-thousand-six-hundred dollars paid. For rental fees, it was two-hundred dollars paid for salt, saltwater, even rental rentals. There were five-thousand-one-hundred dollars collected, and for late payment charges, it was one-hundred-and-thirty dollars, eight cents collected. For other minerals, APAC produced seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-five, excuse me, point zero-seven tons and paid twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars in royalties for January. Candy Creek Crusher produced zero tons and paid zero dollars in royalties. Burbank Materials produced twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-point-nine-zero tons and paid twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents in royalties. And for January, Wilson Ranch, Rocky Banks, and the Schmidt Brothers all produced zero and paid zero royalties. For producing wells, produced sixteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-two for those that have broken down oil. Eleven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirteen wells, oil and, oil and gas combination wells, there's one-hundred-and-eighteen. For CO2 injection, there was seventy. For saltwater disposal and oil injection, there's two thousand, or waste injection, there's two-thousand-three-hundred-and-nineteen. For gas, it was one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-eight. And TA's terminated, it was four-hundred-and-ninety-six, or temporarily abandoned, excuse me. There was four-hundred-and-ninety-six for water and gas injection combination ones, there was fifty-one. And for water supply, there was one-hundred-and-seven. For approved permits, we had one workover permit. We had six plugging permits approved. One emergency plugging permit, no emergency workover permits, and then two permanent permits. And we did not have any completion drilling, drilling completion reports submitted.
Yes, sir.
To follow up, I think I had some notes from last one. One other thing, the council had part about is our producing wells, the prior numbers have been consistent, I guess, going back to before my tenure. So I had our team sit down and go over the numbers and redo these numbers according to the data we had. This is caveated, this is using the best data we have as far as production ones. The annual status reports, we haven't received the full annual status reports from our producers for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. I intend to have our staff contact all the operators and have them submit the annual status reports, which should give us a better picture of the numbers. And then, these numbers will be adjusted as we update the, the records on our end.
Superintendent, will that be through your honor system?
What was that?
Will that be accounted through your honor system? These numbers?
These will be adjusted once we get the, the signed, the signs, the status of, their status, annual status reports from all of our operators. So if there's any listening who haven't reported, please go ahead and submit those.
Nine-one-eight-two-eight-seven-five-seven-zero-zero, Superintendent Trubler, call Lake, call Law. With that, counsel?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, superintendent. I took the, the number of barrels of oil produced for the month of January, two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-some-odd barrels, divided by the thirty-one days in the month of January. I came up with a number of eight-thousand-seven-hundred barrels per day. So that's, councilman Redcorn mentioned this earlier today, that we're down to a couple of thousand barrels per day. And I was just curious, and, and some of us first thought, that I had, and some others had, was where did we lose those barrels? Do you know if it's from, you know, a certain field, or if it's just in general, the, just across the county, that the production is just down, or whatever? Do you know why, you know why we've lost a couple of thousand barrels per day?
Compared to, like, what?
Two, two or three, four months ago.
I have to run the analytics and look at the data.
So, but you don't know of any insignificant, any significant event that may have happened, or an operator that may have shut something down that counts for a significant loss of any, any... And it's not a gotcha question, I just, we're just curious. We know that being a, kind of a rural public, who have always had about ten thousand barrels a day in recent months and years. And we're just curious, where did we lose the, the, these barrels? And then I also want to point out, taking this number, divided by the producing wells, oil wells, sixteen-thousand... Well, actually, I take it back. Let me do some math real quick.
While you're doing the math, can I just say, Mr. Rebar said "we"? I'm kind of convinced where I know where the problem is, so I just want that publicly stated.
Why don't you explain why I'm looking at you doing that?
We just, we just turned down another offer, one of seven for the Continental. And when we started the Continental, I said we need ten, twelve of these a year to get production up, and we're just not approving leases. That's my... You know, the decline curve goes like this, and then it goes down. As an oil company employee, you know, you got to continue to look for production to keep your number going up. And when you don't approve leases, you don't approve concessions or offers, it's going to go down. So that's my problem. So I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm convinced that that's the reason it's going down.
Okay. I just did the math, and I, I don't understand. If we had, if we had the barrels produced for the month of January, two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-five barrels, divided by thirty-one days, is eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-six barrels. And, okay, so that's right. But then, I take, divide that by the amount of oil wells that produce those barrels, eleven-thousand-nine-one-three. So we're at point seven-three barrels per day for oil. I just wanted to run that math to get a feel for what our debt, what our average well production is. So, anyway, these are kind of numbers that we need to, we, we need to be familiar with and know about. And to councilman Redcorn comment and concern is we, we need more barrels produced. And, and I appreciate that, and I agree, we need more barrels.
I mean, I don't know if I agree, but I'm just saying.
I mean, how we get there, for one thing.
That's it.
But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Second chair, please. Thank you, Chairman.
Superintendent, we met, you're a little back, I said, appeal, appeals. I was wondering if you had any update on that?
Still, Katie's going to put together a list, and she'll give you a list of ones. She was going to get with you, she wanted clarity on which ones you were specifically requesting.
Not really.
She looked and she...
Wondering how many there are, and how long we've been in, in, in activity, you know?
Okay. She looks, she does have a request from you, so she wanted to know whether you wanted just once, entertain to oil and minerals, or anything that involved the nation. So I think that's what she was concerned with.
It's all oil and minerals.
Okay, okay. I can let her know.
At this time, just oil and gas, but we do need to know the other issue, because look at your next agenda item.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
I got, superintendent, I was curious to know, and I'm probably going to ask you this until it comes out. Do you know when the revised CFRs will be implemented? Have you a date for us about that?
Still, the, still, it was disclosed at the final meeting. That was the, the last thing I've heard.
It's going to be March or April, and that's, you haven't heard anything else?
I haven't heard anything further.
Is there a possibility that y'all just forget about it?
You can have anything you want.
I took out if we... All right, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Superintendent, thank you for your thoughts. There will be another issue we are looking at, getting a time and schedule date that we can meet with you, and then have a meeting with our superintendent. That will be a good time to bring up the other, the listing. Are those on oil and gas, are they, what effort? But I think you and I need also to look at the other expansion of the unitization out to the west. So, we'll send you an agenda item, but it won't be at an official meeting. We would just like to sit down with you and have that discussion.
I should, the CFRs, as far as I'm aware, will be coming.
I almost got you out of the room, did you say that?
If there's producers that are worried about them, now would be the time to produce, so maybe that would be a way to encourage production.
Thank you. That's a great ending comment.
Thank you, Paul.
How many drilling provisions did we have this past month?
Yes, dear, go ahead. We only had one emergency and two permits.
Drilling permits?
Yes.
That were approved, okay.
Yes.
I didn't hear it, for whatever the... Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that going on down, I'd like to go into the superintendent report, BTFA, is George Geringer. I believe he's there, please, Stephanie.
I am here in George's place today. She's on leave. So, I don't have much to report, just that we are, you know, we got payment out this month. Dealing with a lot of calls and questions for people that haven't received their check sheet yet. They got it scattered in the mail. We do want to encourage beneficiaries, if they have bank accounts, to think about having their funds directly deposited. It's much safer and easier to trace on our end. So that's kind of always been our push, is to do it electronically. And with some, a lot of the rural communities, we're seeing, you know, the postal services are starting to contemplate shutting some of those rural communities' postal services down, which is going to increase the mail time to get to those beneficiaries as well. But we're here and available, as always. Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Oh, maybe a phone number again?
Nine-one-eight-two-eight-seven.
Five-seven-nine-one is our main number. For voluntary hold, is five-seven-nine-four is my main number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, dear. Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
With that, I'd like to go into our charge report. Mr. McIntosh has that in front of us. Yes, Angela, do a short introduction and then take it up.
My name is Angela Brown. If I'm wrong, it's eight.
Wait, we not would see me.
That's not it, my dear, we didn't.
Thank you, because I would have kept looking, and you've stopped me. You just gave a report, dear.
Okay, I apologize for not getting, not having it in front of you. And for February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, our total assets were seven-hundred-and-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Total liabilities were fifty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. The fund equity was six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, no, six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
You better got me.
The net change in fund equity is a decrease of the fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars, which is reflective of the revenue over expenditures in the statement. We, total revenues for this monthly period was zero. Year-to-date is five-hundred thousand. Total expenditures for this month was fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Total year-to-date expenditures is two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-eighteen dollars. And the revenue over expenditures for the month-to-date is fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Year-to-date, two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. Current year fund balance increased in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two from the beginning of the current fiscal year.
Actually, Lacy does, if we have it sent to us.
Okay, yeah, you'll be able to do it.
And that would, that would be fine. Thank you, dear. We'll have to review it before they come up with any questions. But, Lacy, that covering all of our drawdowns, that was correct in there. We don't have to do another one yet, too.
No, we didn't.
Okay, that's why I was seven oh two.
Yeah, well, that one hasn't been deposited yet. It will probably be accepted next month.
Thank you. My addition was actually ahead of the, thank you. We're dismissed. Yes.
I'd like to know why I'm seeing they all wear trucks running around with Osage drive stickers on them.
That's a good question. Are, are you talking tanker trucks, are you talking?
I'm talking oil trucks. They've got Osage drive on them.
The Bureau?
I've seen two or three of them running around. Some come off of Grey Horse Road, some is in Shider, the other's on the highway.
Is it any of the cord trucks?
Pardon me?
Those big wrecker trucks?
Yeah, those great big trucks.
That's a cord. Actually, they're going over and taking out your liquid gas.
What does the sticker say?
Osage drive.
If I'm not mistaken, our tax commission may make all the transport, all commercial vehicles that may be able to haul oil, more like transports, have to have a Osage sticker on it?
Yes, sir.
So that they're registered?
Yes, sir.
So if they're stopped in their hauling oil, that, that we know who they are. So that, I think it's a standard thing.
For the job.
But they're in a business over here, and there's a dirtbag filling all over.
Then that, and also accordingly, you don't know if they're not heading to the refinery?
Exactly.
And if it's not bought or sold there, they don't have to fall under their regulations because of the fur and transportation rules.
And I ask them, and they wouldn't tell me where they were going unless they were...
Be careful, be careful of jerking them truck drivers around.
Or how, or how they, on their stickers. Oh, I'm not scared of them.
I didn't say you were. I just said be careful.
Oh, don't worry, I am.
But thank you for that. Also, I think, and I hate to say this, anytime there's a question, the Bureau of Indian Affairs is actually the ones that issue those stickers. I think that...
But he wouldn't tell me. He just said his company, and he wouldn't even give you the number.
Get a photo of him, and then we'll put him out on Facebook.
Don't worry, I will. Don't tell me to do something, because I'll do it.
Well, no. I'd be one of the few with this gentleman here that had him return oil checks. I actually stopped a truck as a Bureau employee, and three men were going to shoot and kill me up there on Mark Frehman's. See, that's all, that's my verse, sir.
They drive the trucks for, for, uh, wind farms. I talked to them all.
Keep talking to them, I want them closed.
They say, they even call me by my first name, they know me so well.
Long-term gentleman, you saved them a hell of a beating.
I'll throw it in their time.
Thank you. Goodness. With that, going to move on down, counsel? We have the builders unlimited, two-fourteen, my man, Justin, uh... Lacy, just cut in our books on the, two-fourteen. They are looking for a wafer. They are actually going to build the Osage Nation Cemetery. It's out here at St. John's. They're going to be moving thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred cubic yards, but it's not leaving the site. And it'll also, I didn't get to talk to Ms. St. John, but I was going to ask her that, that they want to make a deal with her as a property of, that they should be allowed to. But none of the actual dirt is leaving the site, so I would ask that I could waive that, to your blessing. Lacy, can we do that, since it's not leaving? Is that what he's asking for? Is that what he's asking for?
Well, it's about being called to the local ranchers.
You know.
I don't know.
I think it's a problem. You know, since you just added that, we're gonna have to say you're going to have to get one, unless he could come back and say it's definitely leaving the problem. This is a huge outbuild.
Can you go ahead and do the resolutions again, if it's fourteen, Lacy, and then?
Yes, ma'am, and then we can adjust it accordingly. Can I do that now? Counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion, make one for Builders Unlimited General Contractors for the Osage Nation Cemetery here in Husk, Oklahoma, at the St. John's, to have them apply for the two fourteen permit. Lease. I need a second.
Second.
Second motion on the floor by Chairman Waller, seconded by Councilman Schachelfer. Any questions?
Is this just, or, uh?
Application.
St. John Cemetery, or is it gonna be fraud?
I was just told St. John's, but I'm with Lacy, until I see the actual document, this will cover us either way. Because if it is all, they're required to pay the ten percent. Call for a question.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yeah.
Councilman Tisha Walla?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Upstate.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Schachelfer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And thank you, I'd like to go to seven B, Mr. Prater, water ride. John, if you're willing to join us, and I appreciate your patience. Short introduction, and then tell us what you do.
My name is John Prater, I live north west of Barlville, I'm a rancher, my great-grandfather, part of his original Osage lot.
With Nadine and them family?
Nadine with my mother, yes.
My God, I'll shake your hand, that was a great woman.
And Henry's his dad.
She was a courter.
I got you, my favorite.
Yeah, in the last Osage news, I read an article about the Barlville interested in water in Osage County. I wanted to give y'all a heads up on what they've done to me, make y'all, make me a little bit cautious. In nineteen forty-eight, the city of Barlville wanted to run a water line across the ranch, six-inch water line, and threaten eminent domain, well, eventually my grandmother agreed to that, and in return, we were supposed to get untreated raw water on the ranch for livestock, cattle. So that worked out all right, the manholes they put in were where you could mow over them, and everything was pretty good with the nineteen forty-eight contract. In two thousand and four, the city came again and wanted to put a thirty-six inch water line across the ranch. And, of course, mother fought against that, and anyway, the city threatened eminent domain, so she didn't agree to, in that agreement, there was an Exhibit A that was attached to the original agreement for the water, across the water line. And the city has ignored and went against several of these agreements, as far as the water cost, it was supposed to be three dollars and fifty, fifty cents per thousand gallon. After they got the water line in, they started charging forty dollars for one meter, and twenty dollars for another meter, about sixty-five dollars a month. So it should have been six dollars and seventy-one cents, is what I'm paying right now. Also, the erosion when they crossed Butler Creek twice, it messed up the bank, and it's eroded within about twenty-five feet of my hay barn, which was about seventy feet before, and I talked to the city guy in charge of that, and I said, well, that's your problem. And so I said, well, the manholes out in the middle of the hay field, there's four of them, and they were supposed to be slightly above ground where you could mow over, and they're about, about three foot tall, about tall to this table. And I have to try to get them to even mow around those, right in the middle of the hay field, keep the fires down and trash out of the hay field, I said, that's my problem too. So, all in all, I've had to sue the city of Barlville over this. Now they're saying if I push this any farther, they're gonna try, try to get them to take away, put chemicals in the water, they're gonna file an eminent domain suit against me to try to take my rights away from having water at all. And so I just wanted to let y'all know what's going on with the city of Barlville, you can't trust anything, they say. In that article, they're talking about running a water line from Calhoun to Barlville at a cost of a hundred and eight million dollars, or tapping into the aquifer or the Osage surface in the county, so I'm, I'm actually kind of afraid they might look up and see my property or the ranch, because the topography, it's real high on the south end, and the north is low, and I think they might say, well, here, we've got another place where you build a lake and get water, so I'm a little concerned about that. But I just wanted to let y'all know what's, what's going on in the city of Barlville, if you do any dealing with them, you sure can't trust them, even though they've got it in a contractor, they went against the contract and threatened eminent domain.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Is the land still held in restriction?
It's, it's not in restriction, no, it never has been.
How many acres are we talking about, on the route easement?
Uh, I'm not sure of the.
How long is it?
It's probably a half a mile, quarter, half, quarter to a half.
It's been so long since I've been to the house, but it, it literally was on the edge of the ranch over there.
It was from the, there by the bridge.
Is it bringing the Hula, Lake Water in?
Well, Hula overfills into Hudson Lake.
Oh, Hudson, I'm sorry, yeah, Hudson.
Yeah, and all ranches, they've got irrigation ditch, close from Hula to Hudson, I feel it. But it's, we've been in drought the last two or three years, and there's something there, had to raise water in the brakes, and they're panicking because they don't have enough water, and Barlville is expanding, so their hunting grounds for water is gonna be in Osage County, I just wanted to let y'all be aware of that.
The, the situation you also brought up is the identity of the sales that's taking place on the Indian water line, which doesn't fall under us, the nation made that deal.
Right, yeah, right, well, the, the city, there's over charts, in nineteen seventy-eight, the water rates were supposed to be like three dollars and fifty-six per thousand gallon for untreated raw, raw water, and my family's overpaid about thirteen thousand dollars, the city only wanted to pay about twenty-five hundred up the back, and, you know, just a big mess, I just will let y'all know what's going on.
We are aware of it now, counsel, do you have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like you to keep us updated, I do want to say this much, is that your mother was a fine and I liked your dad-in-law, but your mother was just that special of a person. They kind of took care of me, put me under their wing, when I started here in nineteen seventy-nine.
Is that right?
So you come from some great people, and we'll help you in any way we can. I think the first comment is the city of Barlville's already looking at other avenues, and I think as the headright owners, we are having a discipline of the protection of our water rights, and in your case, the protection of the ownership of the rights, and how are they implementing something when you're holding the contract they signed?
They're just ignoring us, they're just ignoring contracts.
Keep us updated.
Yeah, so if I, if I push it any further, they're gonna file an eminent domain, which my attorney said, we could fight that, but he's talking like a hundred thousand dollars to fight this, so I'm not sure.
Are you in litigation as we speak here?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we're gonna talk about until I get to visiting, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You bet, thank you all.
Just keep an eye on that, me and you. With that, I'd like to look down on the item number seven C, Indale Carbon Capture, and that's your group. Was this off the request that they had previous time on the email? Yes, and I told you to go ahead and add them on. Them not being present today, can I move on down the agenda? Thank you, with that being gone, I'd like to move down to seven D, I had a request, Ms. Whitehall? Please, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, counsel, I love coming to your meetings, because I, I get to learn a lot here, and one of, one of my main questions today, I, I have a couple more, if you indulge me there, one of my main questions today is about this, the, it seems like, and maybe you can't talk about, it seems like the capture point and the Him, Himland, what's the name of that?
Imdol.
Imdol, it's a project that's going hand in hand now, it seems that it keeps unfolding for us shareholders, because we get little articles here, little articles there, that we do understand, or I do understand, that it's part of the bigger capture point sequestration effort, which was discussed at the last Minerals Council meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and for some of us shareholders, and I'm gonna be speaking in my individual capacity right now, because the chairman asked me to do so, but for some of us shareholders, it's, it's quite a concern, because we all believe from what we've seen that this is experimental stuff. It hasn't been around for a very long time, and I guess one of my biggest questions with this project that's on the agenda today, and I know that it hasn't been discussed with you guys, you probably know more about it than I do, but it seems to me like they're gonna be sucking the CO2 out of the air, over in the middle of our minerals estate, far, far away from a city or pollution, and putting it into our, wanting to put it into our poor space, as a smaller part of this larger capture point sequestration. And the only reason that these companies are doing this is because there's federal dollars to be made on it. And to me, just as a shareholder, and as a person that knows that God has blessed us very much with this land that we have here, all of our families have received a blessing of it. And I truly believe that we're on this land because God has us on this land.
But what?
To me, pulling stuff, substance out of our air to put in the ground, there's no truth in that. There's no truth about it, it's, it's just a money thing, and I felt like it's exploitation, and like I said, I'm speaking in my individual capacity right now, and I, I hope that when these things are presented to you, that you will take that into consideration, that our lands are important, they're a blessing from the Almighty, the air and the earth, and I, I believe that everything underneath that ground belongs to us Osage people, and that we are the people that get to make a decision about it. And I really appreciated your question, Congressman Rebar, about the production, where, where did that two thousand barrels of production go this month?
Yes.
So I think that we need to be walking in this with our eyes wide open, because there are forces on the outside coming in here that want to do just exactly what happened in that movie, The Killer Moon, they may, they may have gotten a little bit more slick about it, a little bit more deceptive about it. But my heart is that you guys represent us shareholders, and watch out for us, and what's in that ground, and what people are trying to do to exploit that. So that's my number one thing, can I continue on, Chairman?
Can we, respond to that?
Yes, please.
There's also Councilman Schachelfer had asked that specific question. I have the expertise of knowing there's certain elements that are attached to it. You asked about drilling permits, Stephanie asked, you only got two.
Right.
I mean, that tells you, as far as the next question, you didn't hear my speech or my acceptance as a physician at Park of Energy, we're gonna go up and extrapolate those three items to the Secretary of Park of Energy. Grandpa was gonna have to learn that this is Osage reservation, and that we need the participation, yes, but we also need to be able to do the directive on our reservation. Now, I understand that the comments have been made on the emails and Facebook, there is a concern about the property being new, but if that is the case, what happens if we are funded to assist these programs? Do you want us to go out then? Is it, will that help any? Is that if these are all, why are we not getting the federal funding development here? Because that would be my concern. I changed it, I hope transportation policies, procedures, and guidelines for all of Indian country. It's been twenty-three years ago, and I think we can do the same here, because this is so new. Counsel, is there any other comment we need to make?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the comments, we talked outside, I understand, you know, we got one point five million acres of minerals, and you and I communicated, I thought we had a good conversation outside. My only concern is I want to monetize what we got. And I want to, we, we can, I think we can do it as Native American protected under the United States. We keep that rolling. I'm fearful that we're not more aggressive, and I'd share with you what I'm gonna go look at next, which is, I'm getting it clear from the shareholders, let's just stick to the process, which, you know, there's just a lot of money out there, we're sitting on a lot of resource, I want to monetize it, but I think we can do it, you know, I don't know, I hear you're loud and clear if you don't like to see them too, the shareholders. We looked at it, we reviewed it, we looked at all the options, you're telling us no, but I don't want to stop. I want to monetize, I got too many shareholders calling me, can't make their bills, cannot make your bills from here to here, that's the ones that's got me concerned, I'm, I'm happy with ones that live in Tulsa and have big, beautiful homes, I want to be there myself, but right now, I got a lot of them are concerned about getting from July, or January, or June to September, I don't have enough money now, and, and I, I've never been in this situation a lot. I've always been treated with respect out of the BIA, always been, never had to consider selling something off just to make ends meet, so I, I, I agree with you, somehow we gotta move forward, in my view, that's what, I'm gonna just keep going, if we can monetize what we got, CO2 ain't it, and I'm getting it, maybe it's not it, we're looking at this, you just mentioned it, we're asking some pretty hard questions, we're looking at it pretty tough, there's a balancing act there, you know, we're trying to figure out, you know, what's the best move, but I'm with you, we're natives, I lived on a trust property eighty percent of my life, so I know how to deal with the BIA, just have the superintendent say he's gonna come out to my house and start looking and asking questions around the village, Mr. Waller understands, so we are, we're in it together, I don't want you to think that we're not ignoring what y'all, we are, we're, we're look, we're asking the tough questions to the experts, to our attorneys, and if it's just something we can't do and swallow at this point, then let's move on, let's keep pushing, come monetize this estate, so I hope that helps you, I appreciate your words and everything you're saying, thank you.
Thank you, Second Chair, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Maria, for hearing your comments, and you asked about production, there's several factors why, why it's not where it should be right now. One of them is the, is the EA, what you call environmental assessment, it's a very sticky law, it's environment, came into the EA, you know, way back when, and it's, it's gotten more strict since the last decade. Kinder Drummond did his, it's stricter then, and now they put, put on more money that the drillers have to pay to do this assessment, if it's required, and that costs a lot of money too, and to the producers, that's one reason why there's not much drilling. The other reason is, we're not producing, we're not providing enough leases, people come in here and want to produce oil, and we're, we're declining.
We're declining.
And that's, that's another, that's another reason why there's, there's not, not enough production. And as far as the carbon capture is concerned, you know, we have, there's a lot, there's a lot of discussion on that right now, and we haven't come to any conclusion yet, but some people, some people have suggested a lawsuit, you know, I don't know, we already involved in several lawsuits now, but do we need another one, you know, that's something to think about, but, but I agree, you know, that everything is under an area of this ground, and Osage, Osage reservation blocks, to the, to the, to the Osage Mineral State, and the shareholders, for the benefit of the shareholders, if that's how it works. The 1906 allotment act was, was, was put in. There's a lot of controversy, if you read the history, there's a lot of controversy when it happened. They, they approved the constitution before that, you know, in the 1890s. And then they fought for, and we were fighting with the upcoming state of Oklahoma even at that time. And we're still fighting for it every day. And that, that, the state of Oklahoma has a lot to do with what that carbon capture is, is all about. They're using the top surface of the land, that's the reason why it's being put through. And then here we come along and say, okay, we, we own this, you know. So what do we do? You know, there, there you are. And the 1906 allotment act is a very powerful act. It's on my Theodore Roosevelt. If we put it to the test, just like we put other things to the test. It may take another 10 years, you know. But I can say one thing, if Mr. Trump gets in there this fall, that price is going to go down. We thought he could help us when he got in there in 2016, but if the price went down, he didn't, he didn't help us at all. He was supposed to help us with those policies and the EPA, all the regulations. He didn't do that. And I, I can almost guarantee he's not going to do it again if he gets in. We don't know until when, but just beware if he does get in, that price is going to go down. And we're already at a standstill of production.
We stagnate, yes sir.
Chairman, Minerals Council members, it's an honor for me to be here again. I want to address you on this subject. I want to first say I'm glad to have my son Truman with me here. He's home on spring break and he's going to get a little bit of his time. And he went to Mexico City first, then he came home.
Oh, good one, good one.
But he used to, my dad used to drag me along to these meetings, so I kind of dragged him along here. I want to say something about carbon capture and sequestration on behalf of capture points. So, you know, these issues of the 1906 Act and the Osage Minerals Council. The 1906 Act is, you know, the nature of that law puts the Osagers in a unique position. And these issues of subsurface, when we talk about pipelines and different things associated with the subsurface. The Minerals Council is not approving those, to my knowledge. There's things that are going on beneath the subsurface that we don't have control over, historically have not. Now, production of minerals, we have, and that's been, everyone sort of understands and supports that. Some of these other issues and trying to make the subsurface productive for Osage headright owners. I think that is what we're talking about when it comes to carbon capture and sequestration. Now, that is already going on right now through an EOR process, right? So that is already happening in the Osage, approved by the Minerals Council. And in accordance with a class two permit, that's already going on in, with EOR with capture point. But these issues of ownership of the poor space and the safety of it and the economic viability of that. Is the reason capture point has come to ask you for a letter of support for this DOE grant. So we can understand what's there. I understand, yeah, my friend Maria Whitemore, I understand those concerns. There's uncertainty with that. So the question is, do we want to just ignore it and say it's scary, so let's not even look at it? Or do we want to say, let's seek federal funds to see what it is without any obligation to lease or sequester, sequester carbon there? And I think that's what's been proposed to the Minerals Council. Is let's see if we can find federal dollars to explore that together. Which doesn't obligate the Minerals Council to any company, including capture point.
That's correct.
Issues of, so that's what we have asked is, let's get money to where the Minerals Council gets money. To hire your own consultant to evaluate whatever the data that's produced is. That would be, so last meeting, there were two issues that were raised. And as you directed, we had a good conversation with Raleigh Wilson about it. So the question of confidentiality was one of those. We're absolutely fine with that. You should have a consultant that is able to, you get those federal dollars. And by the way, with your support, I think there's a really good chance we'll get the money. Really good chance we'll need that money. But that then becomes a question of confidentiality. We support that, certainly, we support that. There's no reason, those communications and analysis should not be confidential between the Minerals Council. So we of course are supportive of that. These issues, we have provided, I provided Raleigh, two pages of setting forward all of the different ways. We're essentially saying, we support the Minerals Council and its rights under the 1906 Act, the Osage Constitution. Every way you'll be involved in every part of this. And so not only would it be that, that capture point affirmatively says in that document. That any sort of agreements related to carbon capture and sequestration would need to be pursuant to agreements with the Minerals Council.
Thank you. I got to end it at that.
Okay.
Counselor.
Can I say something in clarity? My communication with Ms. Whitemore is not specific to a company. Because we discussed another offer months before this new come up. And at that point, I have asked the Mineral Council that we have a town hall and introduce all the concepts. Of what's going on with not this company that Mr. Pipestem is talking about, but another company. So the communication with shareholders was pivotal at that point. And we wanted to invite all the shareholders to Hominy, and we passed a resolution to do that. Have food and communicate to you all, all the elements that we're learning, what's going on with this proposal coming from someone else. We eventually voted it down. I'm, I'm good with a vote from the Mineral Council and we moved on. But I just want to clarify that our communication when, with our shareholders and yourself and others. Has gone way on, way before what Mr. Pipestem is talking about. Just to clarify. Thank you Chairman.
Yeah, thank you Chairman.
Excuse me, let, let Councilman Redcord in on.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, there's a lot there. I'll start at the, the last and work backwards. Councilman Redcord, maybe it's a lack of, well, he and I both had COVID on December 1st. And that was the last day that, that town hall was, I didn't get it to you, you had it too, I think. This all hurts for me. Okay, so the town hall, which is a great idea, and I think we should do that. And, but the date was established, I think it was going to be in late November, maybe November 29th, I think. Then it got changed to a day in December. No, yeah, I think, I think it was going to be December the 4th or Panthers, but on December the 1st, at the summit.
That's correct.
Councilman Redcord, I think because he was ill, canceled the town hall. There was going to be a town hall, but it was canceled by Mr. Councilman Redcord. So, and then the subject never came up again. But I think it's a great idea. To the point of that Mr. Pipestem mentioned, there's about the subsurface. And for acting oil, gas reserves, or the resource. But the, the, the poor space is something that we have had jurisdiction of for over a hundred years. We put saltwater in the poor space and we do it under two different methods that I'm aware of, and there may be, actually three. But one of them is saltwater disposal wells, which require a easement from us. If it's going to be off your lease premises, off a producer's lease premises, they can utilize one of our wells. One of the wells on our mineral state to inject it in. But only with an easement that, that, from us, from this council. And for a fee. It's been going on for over a hundred years. Another is from water flooding. Those, both of those wells are class two wells. And to water flood is granted by us from, written into the oil gas lease, the right to do this. There are other, I think, agreements besides oil gas lease that may allow for that. But for the most part, they're done by, under, under our, our grant of these rights. Then there's the third one that I'm aware of, and that is the industrial waste well over at the petrolyte plant, Tweedalite, Petrolyte. That became Baker Hughes Tweedalite, then now is called Uchera. That's a class one well. And for them to use our poor space to put industrial waste, water, it's not toxic. But it's not clean enough to put in the stream to river. They're putting that in our poor space. And they only do that, they only have the right to do it because they have an easement from us. From about 20 or 30 years ago, before there was a Mineral Council, the tribal council granted, had a resolution adopted. To grant this right to them for a minimum amount of royalty per year, enterprise per barrel, whichever is the highest. That has been renewed and renewed and renewed and continues to this day. And there's another company getting ready to negotiate a similar class one well with us. To what, to do what, to use our poor space to put industrial waste water. So we have jurisdiction over our poor space. And I just wanted to, to clarify that. So for somebody to say otherwise, the state of Oklahoma needs to amend their state statute, in my opinion. And lessen accept our mineral state from their, from their, from their law. That says that the poor space is owned by the surface owner, however it's worded. We should be less than accepted out of that. So I just wanted to make those couple of comments.
Thank you Counselor.
Councilman, I have one person in the back who'd like to say something. You go ahead. Just respond. We made a resolution that the Osage mineral, minerals owns, the shareholders own the poor space. I voted yes. That was a year over. It's been a while. My comment, don't mean to be unfair, but one of the things you said was, what is poor space?
I didn't say that.
In that meeting, I'll have to look up.
I thought you meant today.
Because I did a lot of research in CO2 sequestration and poor space was always talked about. And I want to say this, I voted then, I still believe it belongs to the shareholders. I don't understand your comments on poor space and why we're bringing it up. If you're greater than me, I think I understand. Can I finish sir, please? That, that poor spaces belongs to you. Belongs to you. I've never wavered on that. Okay, it belongs to us out there in Indian Village where I live. It belongs to this gentleman in the Hominy Indian Village where he lives. It belongs to this lady over here with all this land. It's under her, it's her, yours. And I want to continue to fight for that. I, I've been doing this since I've been eight, 10 years old. We've been fighting for Indian rights. I don't know.
I agree with you.
Because I grew up on Indian land, on trust land. I was raised on trust land. I still have a home out there. You know, everything unless you take it by, by voice, it belongs to the Osagers. That's the way I'm going to live.
I agree with you.
Okay, so I don't understand, I just want to clarify to the public, this is my belief. Here's the other thing, I'm going to say. That's why I liked the previous company's offer. It never came up. Our attorneys don't bring these issues up. This person walked in the door and wanted to do concessions straight out of the BIA. You're going to get your royalties 20%. I liked it. Doesn't bring up this, we're just going to start operating just like we did the cold bed methane. Matter of fact, one of those executives on the cold bed methane came and is in part of this team. It's not this company I'm talking about. It was a previous company. I just want you to know that it was pulled away to where it fit general concession. That's why I liked it. And then it goes straight into Indian country, straight under a trust agreement, straight under the BIA, straight under all the business that we do. They worked it out that way. That's why I said, let's keep moving forward. Hey, the Mineral Council voted it down, I'm good. But at least we gave a damn good overlook in it, make sure. This is not your company at all, Mr. Pipestem. This is the previous. Now we're coming up to another offer, okay? All of a sudden, we're talking about it. Makes me a little nervous. I'll be honest with you. What do we, what do we got to do to protect what's ours? Okay, I heard this gentleman, everything he said, I don't quite line up with everything you're saying. Because unless somebody says, I'm going to take it from you, I'm going to take it from you and you ladies and all that, I'm going to keep fighting for it. And poor space, everything under that ground belongs to you. And that document in 1906, the abstract says all that. We're going to fight for that and we're going to make sure it happens. So if you're, if you're uncomfortable with CO2 and sequestration, I get it and I appreciate your comments and all of it. But we got to keep fighting. We got to keep moving. If that's, if we're not ready, then let's move forward what we are ready for. And that's something I'd like to look at next. One of the things is, is, is production out in this area. I'm a little, okay, I'd like to get out there and look at it. Get our geologists, get some people out there and look, see what's out there. Maybe there's another area out there. By convention, we can get out there and start exploiting it. So just a little nervous, you know, I, I want to make sure we got room to move out there. Get our royalties keep coming to our shareholders. That's number one with me. Hope that's kind of all. Thank you, ma'am. Short, thank you sir.
Yes, it will be short. I'll cut through the chase. Apparently, we've got something that everybody wants. Mr. Pipestem's company is number seven on the list that's actually been here. I listened to that Mr. Evans, was that his name last week? He said a lot of things that weren't quite right. I don't know what else to say, how to say it and try to be nice about it. But until you all sit down and find somebody that can tell you the value of this CO2, this sequestration. To you guys and to us, we might want to do it ourselves. And I would thank Mr. Chairman that when you go to this meeting in Washington DC. You can find somebody up there that would have the ability to value this to us.
I just made that announcement. That's exactly what I want to do.
But like I said, I want to cut through the chase here because it needs to be obvious that, you know, we know there's money here or they wouldn't be here. They're knocking on our doors and we need the money.
We got revenue that can be gotten.
Yeah, we need that money. And so everybody else isn't going to know why we need to do this ourselves. I just wanted to support you guys. I want you to know, I'm expecting great things from you, Mr. Waller.
By God, I won't let my mom down either.
That was good.
Let me, let me ask you, what is your next question?
Well, there's several, but I can, I can narrow, I can narrow it down to one. And I think that the one that I want to go on is leasing. Because I've been, I've been watching this council for a long time, but not as long as probably Mr. Big Horse. Not as long as Mr. Waller or Mr. or Councilman. There's, there's you that have sat out here longer than me, but I've been watching it a long time. And I, and I know that many, many producers have told me over the years. That our checks are going to continue to go on that downward curve. Unless we're exploring, we're doing exploration and putting new holes in our grounds here. And pulling more oils that, oil out. And I believe that to be true. I believe that to be true. And so when Councilman Red, Redcord said that. He said that today. We need to do that. We need, we need to figure out a way.
We need, we need to figure out a way to get our producers here to make this estate be attractive for producers to come to. Cause we don't, we don't have the revenue to do it ourselves right now. And in my view, we, we, as a shareholder, we are gonna either have to join ourselves to a producer to be able to do that, which to me partnerships get very scary. I, I saw some of the writing of that, that nonprofit company that to me decentralizes the power from this body and puts it in the hands of somebody else, which to me is this very scary thing. So all I'm saying is I, I wish that we could come to the table and figure out how to, how to get our leasing, our permitting and our production, our, our, our exploration cut loose. As a shareholder, I want that. And if that means that we have to go to courts of law, then that's what we have to do because to me, the federal government has shut us down. They have, they have come against us as shareholders and they have slammed it shut. And, and they aren't gonna open it back up. They aren't gonna just say, oh, we're gonna open this back up for you. We're gonna have to drive that wedge in there because we're right. You guys, we are right to see in this, to want to, to want to, um, open up production for our shareholders. And, you know, just like I always tell my kids, the truth always works. And the truth is, the federal government has harmed us. And they've harmed our people, not even just Osage people, they have harmed our community. The economy of Osage County. I mean, both my sister and I have had ancillary businesses that, that fielded, that, that served our oil fields here. Neither one of us have that company anymore, our companies anymore, as well as many other Osages and, and many other, uh, non-Osage people that live here in this county. And you guys, in my view, are the only people who knew something about it. And you're Osage Nation Congress.
Just leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. I will, but I, I encourage you in that. And just as Congress, uh, as Ms. Irwin said, I support you guys.
Thank you, sir.
And I will in any way that I can.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you, Maria. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna leave it at that. I, I just want to say that. I appreciate what you said. Can we partner with somebody? We looked at that heavily, and you're right.
It's not good.
It's not good.
It's not good.
And then the questions came to, what's the structure look like to operate? And none of those look good. And it's a lot of feedback from our shareholders. So I appreciate that.
We need producers to want to come in here.
It's just, so the safest thing I think is to just keep going with what we got over here. But that's, you just heard the superintendent produce now because when these rules come out, all bets are off. So you're right.
That was my third question. Do you guys have a strategy for then, when that ru- rule gets finalized? I, I don't, you don't need to tell me that.
I'm not gonna tell you.
Right, you don't need to tell me that.
Yeah, no one's gonna vouch for me in my own meeting. Trying to tell me to tell you what my forty years of experience is gonna do for my headright owner. I happen to be one. I've stayed there longer. Where was y'all twenty-five years ago? When I brought the largest lawsuit against America, United States of America. Where was you when I was getting them debt threats from those, like, oil companies? So you remember who you're talking to?
Yes, sir.
Let's go. If I make this.
Let's go on to the agenda, but we appreciate it.
I'm just, if I could just say this much, I'm sorry, it'll take one sentence. It appears to me that if we do what, partner or anything outside of this, it's gotta be ran by this group. And then with something, the liability's gotta be out somewhere else. Those are the challenges I'm seeing. I just want you to hear, or everybody else to hear. It comes really down to that. I've been told we want it right in this chain. But the liabilities need to get somewhere out because we're under trust. So that's kind of driving the whole thought process now. We want to make sure you guys, I'd like to have a, a, the, the town hall. We, you're right, Mr. Red, but I got COVID, we had to cancel. But we are trying to get your input. Somehow, we want to make sure you guys have a chance to say, we gotta, and that was my thought, was once these things roll out, we gotta rethink what's next.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, dear. Thank you all.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
With that, I'd like to go on to another agenda. I'd like to take a motion in to accept a minute's meeting. Go move. I need a second.
What is it?
To approve the meeting minutes?
Okay, yeah, second.
I have a motion on the floor, my seconds are ready for second. Councilman Big Horse. Call for the question, please.
They're not here. They're not here. They're not here.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Is this the minutes?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Upstate.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned, I'll second that. Counsel, we have second chair, Red Eagle, motion adjourned, second chair, Dr. Chairman. Call for the question.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, God.
I'm sorry.